All right, it's 7:05, we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. Our city secretary is making some copies and sending some information that y'all brought in to our commissioners at home, so bear with us as we wait for a couple of minutes.
Just checked it. Mr. McCormick, you on the line? Okay, Mr. Bueller?
I am now, yes, sir.
Okay, our city secretary is sending you a copy of something, since you're on the Zoom, you'll get it here real soon.
It just came through.
Okay, thank you.
Good, yeah, this gentleman was just brought to us by our neighbors for consideration for your process to look at. Thank you, and thank you. All right, so... Okay, so let's go ahead and take a breath, and we can do our roll call. He's online.
Online. Commissioner Herndon? Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
And Chairman Solis?
Here. Now that we have a Quorm's pleasant, let's go ahead and go to our consent agenda, which is the approval of the zoning commission meetings from March 2nd, 2021. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes that were sent to us and posted since Friday. Are there any additions, corrections that you'd like to state? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval. Got a motion? Mr. Jackson, second Herndon? Any other discussion? Commissioner McCormick, any thoughts?
No, I think...
Commissioner Bueller, any thoughts?
Looks great.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Go on to the first item number three, which is a public hearing. It's the second public hearing on the geographical boundaries of the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. And so I will open the public hearing, it is 7:09, and let's go straight in, and I do have people that are signed up, and I appreciate y'all being here. Let's go first, Ms. Kate. Oh, I apologize, you are correct. Item three, Mr. Ackley.
Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. I'd like, Mr. Appleby, to put up the map that was in the agenda.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, he is referring to the app, to the map that is in the agenda, you should have that in front of you for consideration. It is styled the potential RR district, is that correct?
Yes, I think so. What I'd like to point out is that the boundaries within the properties that are depicted on this and their usage are seriously out of date. Properties on South Winston at, I think it's 140 South Winston and 125 South Winston that are listed as nonprofit or church properties are actually privately owned now, and are residences. The property at 119 West Castle Lane, right here, that is shown, is actually been walled off on the back wall and is now listed for sale as a private residence. So, as well, the property, the overall property here that's listed as the church is actually two distinct entities right now. It's a Christian school and the church, and the school's property line runs through half of their parking lot and back here. The other discrepancy is in the back of this area, which was replatted from when Jerry Soltzer sold the property, and it was replatted, there was hearings on that here. So about a quarter of an acre on each of those two lots has been cut off and is now attached to the school property, and the church property is now isolated from that back boundary. The school property actually runs along the driveway in that area and the back part of that parking lot. So I think before we start considering the boundaries of the rural residential district, we need to seriously update an app on this. Because the rationale for drawing this boundary was to include properties owned by nonprofit. They are not owned by nonprofit, and they are, and the one property that is still owned by the school is listed for sale as a zoning residence.
So, if I could ask, Ryan, the map was created by home?
Well, this is our current zoning map, and it hasn't been updated in probably six or seven years, and the plan was to actually update it once we addressed the RR district. He is correct on some of those because the school and the church did replats most recently over the last year and a half, I believe. I think for reasons moving forward, we should probably look at having a direct map, which includes those areas that have been replatted and just update those lots.
I suppose my question would be, Dr. Ackley yourself, as well as Ryan, do you feel this sufficiently at least covers the overall area that you're looking at, or is it something else that we have to...
Well, that outer boundary should go along the church parking lot.
Because what you're proposing, or, I mean, this is what is shown to us. However, we have not discussed your proposal as to what will be included in the RR district.
Okay.
And so with that definition, I'm looking helicopter up, right, from the top. Is everything within these areas, regardless of what they're classified at this point, what the neighborhood would like to see as RR district?
The short answer is no, because of the maps that we had, yes, yes, because we included the we included the entire church property and the Boy Scout property as well.
Because I am, and let me clarify, as far as, I'm looking at the same map you are. What I interpret as before today is all of this property that is reflected in that is what you would like to see as RR district?
All the property there and the...
Everything without designation is what you guys...
I'd say that, you know, if, one thing is I don't, I wish the rationale for not including the church properties and the Boy Scout Ranch is a separate issue. But I'm saying if this is one proposed boundary of this, it needs to be seriously updated as well. Additionally...
Let me ask for clarification. Brian, the area that you have in super black, what was the purpose of that outline?
That was defined based on the resolution written up by Mr. Schnall to try to cover everything in the residential area. Again, we did not include the purple area in the, which is the PUD area, and tried to redistrict, or excuse me, redraw it along the boundaries of the church and school itself. But, you know, I did not remember, and we did replat those particular areas, and and Mr. Ackley is correct, because on the replat, it does intersect the way the church and the school are now drawn up.
So...
The other problem with that is that by doing that boundary along the north side of West Castle Lane, there are several properties within that area on West Castle Lane and the other one on South Winston that are not included within the rural residential district, even though those people signed the petition that we wanted to be there.
What today is obviously a public hearing. We needed a starting point, and this is a starting point, so you're accurate to be able to bring forth, say, while this is, we want to expand it, we want to be able to do that, and go beyond that, that is what we're about in a public hearing, right? Listening to how you would, and so you have brought that in writing as to what, since you've already seen what we have proposed as it was posted in the agenda, do you have an additional verbiage or something that's gonna be presented by your team today that says, please include this, please include that, as we go through this public hearing process?
Well, I'd say, please include the properties along West Castle Lane on that side and on South Winston Lane up to there as well. The other properties on South Winston Lane that are currently currently up in that, up in this area here, there's three properties that are now zoning residential, and I don't see the rationale for cutting off the rural residential district outside of those. So, the properties in question...
Mr. Ackley, Mr. Bella provided a map, is that the one you're referring to? Like an alternative? Is that, because he provided me to show up here as well, is that...
Okay, yeah, if you can show that one.
Peter, are you guys on the same team?
There are a lot of errors in this one, and I think we...
Let me pull up the other one, Chairman.
Okay.
I wanna go forward with that.
So, Peter, you presented something else, Mr. Bella brought something else, is that in alliance with what the Ackleys are talking about, because you guys are on the same team, we're trying to get to a common denominator here. Wonderful. So we're gonna have how many speakers?
Well, at the last meeting, I'll just point out that we had proposed that the area west of West and south of Northwest Military Highway, including the Boy Scout Ranch, Antonian, on West Avenue, Antonian, and Aggie Park, also be included in the rural residential district. That's the basis of that.
Okay, so go ahead and complete your presentation, then we'll listen to everybody else.
Okay, just for the record, the properties in question that are listed as nonprofit, but are now privately owned are 120 South Winston, 140 South Winston, and 119 West Castle Lane. Those are the areas that are not nonprofit in that particular area, as well, as we've discussed the the southern boundary of the school and church property, as well as the division between the school and church properties need to be defined.
Okay. So, according to our map, the map that is presented in the zoning packet, you'd like to see an additional, additions of other areas to be included?
Yeah, I think it's mostly in the area of correction.
Okay.
And I'd like to understand the rationale for including properties both...
But it's a public hearing, so we won't have a given take. This was what was the, was brought forth for us to have as a starting point, and it's exactly that. And you are doing correct by showing us some areas that should be included for consideration before the adoption, and that's what the public hearing is all about.
Well, on the, on the map that has just been put up here, we now include the areas of the Boy Scout Ranch, the Aggie Park, and West Avenue, and the Castle Hills First Baptist Church. I think we are probably not talking about the commercial area, I'm not talking about the commercial area anymore. And my rationale for this is that these these particular properties are under a zoning residential under special use permits. And if their usage was going to be changed in the future, they'd have to go in for rezoning based on that alone. And I just feel that the, designating them as rural residential, part of the rural residential district gives the city its maximum number of options. You know, it's a point that they would have to be rezoned anyway if they were going to non-profit use. So that's my rationale for including the larger areas within this. I think it gives the city maximum flexibility. On the, on the other side of that is the petition that we put in is basically the streets of, that we mentioned before, you know, South Winston, West Castle Lane, Foxhole Lane, Hibiscus Lane, and Foxhole Cove. Those are the people that said we want to be included within the rural residential district. So, and, you know, I just leave it at that. I think we're, we're, as Quentin Baker said at the last point, for the point of discussion, we would like to see how the Boy Scout Ranch and the, and Aggie Park and the other nonprofits and First Baptist Church and school properties to be included within the rural residential district. And my rationale is that if their usage was gonna change, they'd have to come in for rezoning anyway. So what's the difference between coming in for rezoning and zoning, or coming in for rezoning and as in rural residential district?
Okay, thank you, sir. Peter? Mr. Bella?
Mr. Chairman, Commission, Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Peter Bella, 110 Hibiscus Lane, part of the great west of West Avenue neighborhood. Simply enough, I'd like to request that, I think what is most critical from my point of view is that the Boy Scout Ranch be included in the rural residential district. So this again is what you see included in that yellow boundary. We've, I have, I did this last night, I took out the PUD that's on West Avenue, and I also exerped the existing business, general business, G, district areas, and I took out, as I say, the PUD. So the, I know that some of us are fine with the church and the school being considered outside of the rural residential. So that's something to take into consideration, we do have several ideas on that. But I think what is key and what is unified is the idea of Boy Scout Park being part of the rural residential district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ackley?
Thank you, Mr. Solis, I'm Jacqueline Ackley at 118 West Castle Lane. Mr. Appleby, could we have the map, Peter Bella's map, with the, call it the Peter Bella map with the black crayon? I'm simplistic.
You got it.
So the back was in the packet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The packet map.
The non-Peter Bella pack.
The non-Peter Bella packet, black color crayon map, please.
There you go.
Well, it's true, we didn't get together as a group and discuss this before tonight, but I like what Peter has done with the addition of eliminating that little keyhole in the upper right-hand part of the black crayon map. That little keyhole, I think, was, and I could be wrong, Peter, I'm sorry, created because of 120 and 140 South Winston Lane being gray on that map indicating that it is owned by the, a nonprofit, used to be owned by the church. That's not been true for some years. At 120, there's a resident, a nurse who's lived there for a number of years, she's even built a casita in the back for her aged father to live in before his death. It's been a, it's been a residential home for single-family dwelling for multiple years. The same is true for 140, it has changed hands recently, it's currently under remodeling, it's a big green building, because right now all you see is the siding that's for weather protection, it doesn't have its final siding on it. If you start coming down West Castle Lane, from the corner of West Castle Lane and South Winston, you come immediately after 140 South Winston to the home of Maria and Todd Trabe. And they actually own two lots in that notch. They're white, because they're personally owned. They own 125 and a lot that's behind it, so it's all one ownership, it's 125 West Castle Lane. And they have signed the petition to include West Castle Lane, South Winston Lane, Hibiscus Lane, Foxhole Lane, and Foxhole Cove. I do hope y'all have our petition. So they're in that little squared-out keyhole, I'm gonna call it the keyhole, because it's an indentation. And then right next to them is a lot that is owned by the school and put up for sale with a big, big state-type sign that says, "For Sale Residential Lot 1.15 Acres." And they have nicely fenced the back of that now, so you can clearly see where the demarcation would be between that residential property, when it sells, and the rest of the school. I don't think so much that the replating of the school versus the church is important in that large gray pentagon up there in the corner, as it is to recognize that if one ran a line sort of across from the two tips of that keyhole, which would essentially be along, be along a fence, which is behind Mr. Soltzer's property, where he lives on West Castle Lane, which is address 111, and the property he recently sold, that is currently not constructed on, which is 115 West Castle Lane, and the property that's put up for residential sale by the school, which is 119 West Castle Lane. There's a continuous fence, it's stone between the, along the back of the Soltzer home and the Soltzer property now sold. It's wooden behind the 119 West Castle Lane, which is still for sale by the school, and would almost make a straight line from the black color crayon that's going north by northwest up to the end of the five lots that are on South Winston Lane. So my simple proposal would be to use the black color crayon, Peter Bella Agenda Page 9 map, but just to close that notch hole, which essentially follows the fence that is behind the properties, I mentioned again, 111, 115, and 129, and would include West Castle Lane, and would include the properties on South Winston Lane, which are 120, 128, 134, and 140 South Winston Lane. And by drawing that line straight across to include those properties that I mentioned on West Castle Lane and South Winston Lane, we make this a straight line and a box and keep that keyhole from being in there. So I'd like to propose that we do that. So, I'm not quite sure how to make that a smooth wording, but let me try. I'd like to propose that we use the Peter Bella Black Crayon Agenda Map as borders for the RR, with the exception that the keyhole notch in the upper right corner is eliminated by drawing the line straight behind those properties of 111, 115, 129, West Castle Lane, and doing it so that it includes the properties that face South Winston also, including 120, 128, 134, and 140 South Winston Lane. There's my proposal. The Peter Bella Black Color Crayon Agenda Map Amendment.
Amendment. Thank you very much.
We'll just say city version, Mr. Bella.
Mr. Lewis? Come on back. What say you tonight?
Well, I say that I want us to start thinking logically about some things. I don't have a problem with the rural district. You know, I think there's a lot of things about it that I like, some things I don't like. But when I'm really here, we're gonna talk about the boundaries. And since I'm fogged up, I'll have to take my glasses off. So I want to do the opposite of what they're doing. They want to take the black line across to South Winston and include all the way to the Boy Scout Park. The lots, and growing up in Castle Hills, ever since I was here for six years, six years old, so 60 years, South Winston has always been kind of like a different look than Hibiscus and Foxhole. When we started the rural district, and I probably had a lot to do with it being started, even though I wasn't involved in creating it, I don't have a problem with the idea of trying to keep Foxhole and Hibiscus and everything beautiful, and not breaking up the lots anymore, and doing all the things to keep the beauty and charm. But I don't want to add additional restrictions to areas that don't have the beauty and charm, that don't follow. If there was a mission statement, which I would love to see, if there was a mission statement, what we're really trying to achieve. I don't think we're trying to achieve anything other than saving the charm and beauty of what we're calling the rural district. The area of South Winston and the parking lot across the street and the church and the school, I don't consider to be harmed by not being in the rural district. There's no trees, there's power lines, who knows what's ever gonna happen to Boy Scout Park. But those lots, the problem that exists is that the individuals with a church that are thinking about selling those lots want about $200,000 to $220,000 a piece for them. What that does, and I gave you some numbers, and if you look at them, you'll see that with $150 a square foot, $220, or $200,000 for a lot or what have you, you're looking at houses that are gonna be over $500,000, right there amongst houses that the average value is 280. I don't want to put these lots into the same situation of having to be .75 acres, because economically, it's not feasible to use that land. And I'm not here talking about a profit, I have no skin in this game, I'm a citizen of Castle Hills. We need taxes, and they don't pay taxes on six of those lots because they're owned by the church. You're looking at $2.5 million of improvements if we were able to keep that out of the rural district, and then somebody could possibly then come back and try to get .6 acre lots that would be feasible to build houses on. Otherwise, you're just gonna see a dust bowl there. It's not, you can't get the appraisals, it's not the land that people want to buy. So I'm proposing that you take that part, everything that is basically north on the McGimsey Park side, out of the rural district. I don't see the advantage. If there was an advantage, if it was gonna give our mission statement, I'd be all for it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, always good to see you. Item three, Mr. Baker.
Evening, Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus. Mr. Appleby, could you put up the true Peter Bella map?
I will tell you, it's a little disappointing y'all didn't organize as well as you did in the past. Hearing five different proposals is just lends itself to going back to what is originally proposed.
I'll try and keep my presentation simple, I'm very much in support of the rural residential district, as you know. It's getting pretty convoluted on where the boundaries are.
Which is why we're having a boundary discussion.
So, I'd like to give you a simple descriptor and see if this will help everybody along. Okay, if you look at the yellow outline as Peter has drawn it, we can describe the outer borders very simply. North of Antonian, west of West Avenue, west of Northwest Military, north of West Avenue, of course, south of Wedgewood, and east of the railroad tracks. That gives us our outer boundary of that area. And then there's exceptions. We exclude all presently zoned commercial properties. Okay, leave them out. And the church and the Christian school, I personally would like to see them in, but that leaves just three exceptions to the boundaries I described for you. Commercial properties, the Christian school, and the church. That is a very simple descriptor that we can use for a resolution to move things forward. So I strongly favor the Peter Bella diagram, and I hope those boundaries give you some help in creating a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker? All right, thank you very much for giving us back our time. Anybody else online would like to speak in reference to this item, which is item number three on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, this is Abel Martinez at 105 Hibiscus, I would support the Peter Bella boundaries. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it. Now, I do have a clarification, who presented this to us, the one that has the northwest side of South Winston, Winston, north of West Castle Lane?
That would be Mr. Lewis.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought, kind of coincided with the... Okay, thank you, that's what I thought, kinda coincided with what we're talking about. Um, at this moment, I've seen no one else is interested in speaking in reference to this. At 7:36, I will close the public agenda, I mean, public hearing on the, uh, on the rural residential boundaries, and we will on to item number four, which is discussing impossible action by the zoning commission on the geographical boundaries for the rural residential rural district, uh, zoning district. And, um, gentlemen, we've had discussions, we've had proposals, counter proposals, we have a starting point, and I think that's essential to think of overall, that what we needed to have as we go through this process of the designation for the rural residential district, is to have a starting point in reference to boundaries. Our, our city was able to provide the original map that you have in your packet that was based off our, our discussions and, and what we have stated before as the zoning commission. Obviously, the community today had some additions, some, some corrections that they wanted to add, and that is for consideration, but let's go and have our discussion. So, um, Mr. Jackson, your thoughts?
I have a question for Mr. Schnell and Mr. Rappley, what kind of public notice do we need to give to all of these people when we start talking about changing all of their zonings and including them in this?
Uh, I'll, Mr. Schnell will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Um, the, the purpose of this evening's discussion, um, the previous agenda item, both at this meeting and the previous meeting, was for the commission to have input from the community and make a preliminary determination as to who would be notified, and what they would be told in their notification. Um, the, the process will, will be, once the zoning commission makes the preliminary determination about the boundaries for the rural residential zone, um, anyone whose property is within that proposed geographical area will get a notice. Um, they will, will need to be sent a notice of a public hearing on the rezoning of their property. That will be at least a hundred, probably close to 200 notices, um, because not only does it need to go to each of the property owners, it also needs to go to the owners of all property within 500 feet of all, of any of those properties. So it'll go, it'll go for the folks whose property is along West Avenue, it'll go to, um, owners of property on the streets, um, along West Avenue. Um, if, if you all use what, what we affectionately call the Peter Bella map, um, it would basically go to, um, the street, um, immediately north of Antonian, and then anything across West Avenue for 500 feet, uh, they would also get notices that the property in the area west of West, um, are, are being considered for rezoning from A, if they're zoned A, or whatever, um, i- i- if their zoning is different, say, along Northwest Military.
Okay, just for clarification, that is standard operating procedure for us in the zoning case, correct?
The 500? It is state law and local ordinance required under Chapter 211 of the Local Government Code.
And, and, Mr. Jackson, I think that answers you directly as far as the vast number of people that they'd be addressed. Are there any questions, other questions for you, sir?
And I, Chairman, I could speak for staff, we only wanna send these letters out once, so we wanna get it right.
Got it, thank you. Mr. Herndon? Your thoughts?
Yeah, um, this is actually directed to Mr. Schnell also. Uh, I had a question as to, what are our foreseeable legal issues if we were to include, say, the school or a church in this zoning?
Well, um, it's, it's really hard to predict what could happen. Um, the reality is that, um, some of the property owners affected by, um, the, the Bella map, um, although Mr. Mr. Baker's, um, amendment, shall we say, to the Bella map, um, might alleviate some of the concern, um, uh, you know, they, they were not involved. They, they weren't part of the petition, uh, as far as I recall from the questions the chairman asked at the last meeting. So, um, to the extent that, you know, any of those, um, non-A residential properties, um, uh, receive a notice that they're subject to rezoning, um, that could raise some concerns, but they will have the same opportunity as Mr. Bella and the other folks who live west of West to come and speak to the zoning commission and make their case about whether they do or do not want to be rezoned. Um, and, and that is the way it'll happen, um, though everyone has an opportunity to speak and be heard. Um, uh, but, you know, Mr. Herndon, uh, there's an old saying, anybody can sue anybody for anything, that doesn't mean they win. And, uh, that's what I would say about the, the potential for legal action. Um, zoning is discretionary, but it's important to do this in a, um, in a careful, thorough, transparent way, and the zoning commission has certainly demonstrated, um, it's not only willingness, but it's by its actions to deal with this issue in, in those manners.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell, and if we were to include, um, everything, say, uh, except the school proper, be, and the, the, the church proper, my concern is, is that there's, there's a few lots, there's some outliers in there. Uh, they're platted separately, they're not part of the, the school or church proper, and they could be sold later and not subject to the rural residential district, whereas a neighbor possibly would be. Uh, that, that's what my concern is there, and I'm wondering, could it be divided, or should the school be included? I'm just, I'm kinda wrestling with that right now.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hossolies, if I may respond to that, because I think Mr. Herndon just raised a different kind of legal question that I think merits fair dis- discussion, and that is, there, there are prohibitions by case law against what's called spot zoning. And spot zoning is when you have properties that are zoned in a way that are out of sync with their neighborhood. Um, so, so, a lot of zoning is, is what I would call transitional zoning, where you go from single-family residence to a, a little bit more, um, uh, intense zoning, um, a- and then to even more intense zoning. Um, so, the, the, what Mr. Herndon suggests, um, does raise, I think, a, an issue that's fair for zoning commission consideration that should try to keep neighborhoods and street blocks intact with, with the same or at least somewhat similar zoning, um, to avoid a zoning, a, a spot zoning challenge. Um, you know, one of the things that, that was thought about when Mr. Rappley, um, with some comments from me, did the, the, the drawing that was part of the agenda, was to include in the proposed RR zone the properties west of West that are currently zoned, single-family, A-single-family residential. That's where, where most of that drawing came from. That's why it did not include, for example, Aggie Park, or Antonian, or the Boy Scout camp, because the last map the city had didn't show those properties as A-single-family zone properties. Um, the little spotty areas we have, um, I guess by East Castle Lane, behind the school and the church, are probably the most challenging part of, of this issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buehler, your thoughts?
When I, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when I, when I, something, Mr. Gregory, you sort of, sort of, uh, highlighted tonight, you know, when, when I think of the purpose of, or the, or the, what gave rise to this, um, these proposals, I, I, I see the, the kind of the, the, the essence of a, of a neighborhood, the, the, i- is, is sort of uniform. And when I drive down, uh, South Manten to uh, south, uh, to, to West Castle, I, 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 it's a different feel than once I pass, uh, West Castle, i- 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 going down South Manten. And that's why I, you know, I, I would, I would suggest that, 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 that the line be, you know, uh, drawn straight across, you know, straight across, uh, west, uh, West Castle at that point. Uh, you know, to run, to run around the, the back end of the, of the, of what, what is the, I guess, the church, i- and straight up, straight up, uh, west of, straight up south, South, uh, Manten and across, and, and have basically the entirety of that, that block of, of the South Manten block that, that, uh, that backs to the, the park as, as not part of this. Are you, are you following?
Yes, sir.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Buehler, I think when you said South Manten, you meant South Winston.
I did, I did, correct.
Across the street from the church and, and backs up onto the Boy Scout property.
Correct.
It, it's not South Manten that you were talking about, it's really-
It's South Winston.
Okay, thank you.
It's South, South Winston down. The, the properties that, that, that back on South Winston to, to McGimsey, uh, down to basically, uh, West Castle. Yeah, I, I just don't think they're the same as the properties once you pass West Castle.
That's what I, yeah.
Mr. McCormick, Commissioner.
Yeah, I've, I've got the, the same cons- same concerns and the same problems everybody else does. Um, I think that, uh, Mr. Bella's diagram is, is a good starting place, but I think we wanna exclude those properties that are already in commercial use. I think we wanna exclude the church. I think we can probably come up with some kind of an, of a, of a boundary on the, on the southwest side of the church that will include some of the, or exclude some of those residential properties in there, in that little triangle up in the corner, uh, between West and, uh, and Northwest Military. Uh, I think we do wanna include the, um, Scout Camp, and I, I'll, I'll give you my rationale for that. The Scout Camp is on a, a deed with the possibility of reverter. The Scouts get to use it for a Scout Camp as long as they use it for a Scout Camp. If they quit using it as a Scout Camp, it reverts to the previous ownership. Now, the reason that's a concern is because all that is outside the purview of the city, and the property can change hands and ownership without the city ever being aware. And then the, the Scout Camp or the owners can sell it off to somebody without the city ever being aware. And I think it's important that the limitations of the RR district be, uh, established on that property, because if, if we don't, then, uh, if it, when it's bought, it'd be, it's too late to go back and change the zoning. That property is about a hundred acres, and it all drains into the same drainage area that we all know is a problem on that side of town. And, uh, the problem with the church is that it is already outside the, the limitations that are established for the RR district, and that a substantial portion of its property is covered with non-permeable, uh, asphalt to make a parking lot. And so, I, I, there, there's that reason to exclude it from the, uh, RR district. The other is that, that as a church, it's subject to the, to the Religious Land Use Act, and if we include it in the district, then we, uh, can't discriminate against any other church for inclusion in that district as well. Uh, the reason for that is because the Land Use Act has in its, in its own provisions, that exact wording, that once you have a, a zoning district in which a church is present, you can't discriminate against seeing the creation of any new church in that district. This one is there, we can't go back and change it, and we can't, uh, uh, establish any, uh, 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 post facto law, ex post facto law, that would, would make the church's current situation illegal. So we can't change that circumstance. We can include or exclude from the RR district some portion of that property. I'd like to, as a motion for discussion, move that we accept Mr. Bella's diagram with the exclusion of property zoned, commercial, and the church, and we have to come up with some kind of, of a compromise on the, on the land, uh, northwest of the church and southwest of the church in that little corner.
Thank you, Skip, and, and I'll hold off on your motion in a second, I, I do wanna speak, and then we'll, we'll have that motion. You know, I have, I have spoken out on, on this area, uh, from the very start. And, and I, and one of the things that it started, of course, obviously, and it was dovetailed with some of the things uh, that Mr. Lewis had proposed for us. And, Mr. Lewis, and you and I have had some, some talking back and forth sometimes, and, you know, tonight, you, you made some sense to me on some things that I can concur with you. Um, and, and that was the case that you were making for compatibility. The one thing that I, I think is very, very important is what the role of the zoning commission is to ensure compatibility within the neighborhood. So when zoning ca- applications come forward, that we're supposed to look at, how is that compatible with what's being done today? We've recently had, you know, the coffee shop and the different things bring brought to us, which clearly were not compa- you know, comparable with what was next score. And, and so what the issue to me was transparency. Uh, you know, I am anti putting government in everybody's business, that's not me. And it's also something else to me about compatibility, that's what drives me as chair. In this instance, I, I think the inclusion of some of these areas that we talk about aren't within the compatibility area, in my estimation. It was to preserve that small pocket of area that we wanted to ensure that save the, um, the, I'm gonna say in the Spanish, the ambiente, ambiente, the, the ambiance of what it was to be in a rural residential district within the city of Castle Hills, within the city of San Antonio, adjacent to Fort Tempe. That was the purpose, not to overtake this whole area, including, uh, Antonian schools and churches or commercial areas. That was not the intent in any way, shape, or form. We understood the value of being able to preserve that area that is, is quite unique in the city of San Antonio, probably in any major city. We need to preserve that, and those were the steps that we take, and we've taken. As we look at these boundaries, I, you know, I have a little difficulty, um, in particular to the Boy Scout area. Skip brought up a really good point about the, the, the reversion if it leaves the Boy Scouts, and that's such a big property within our area, that my inkling is, I wanna stick with what Mark has provided to us, because here's what we needed to do. We needed to have a starting point. And as you saw tonight, just by the different addressing of each one of you guys, there was like five other proposals of what should be included, not included, or, or additional areas. But we need a starting point. So what is proposed by city staff here to me is a great starting point, and I am willing, I wonder what scares the heck out of me, to look at the Boy Scout camp being part of that area. And the reason is because it's gonna spur discussion. We have to spur people to understand what would take place. I think it's, it's unfair for us to go to a school and place zoning over them, and they haven't been part of these discussions since day one. I think it's unfair that we haven't had any commerc- any discussion with any of our commercial neighbors about what this is all about, and expect them to be all of a sudden in favor. I think it's unfair that we've haven't had the Boy Scouts, or any representative of them, understand what this is all about and what we're trying to accomplish. That's what's key, it's common sense, it's not that hard, and we wanna be able to be more inclusive and transparent as neighbors. So, Skip, that's my comment, um, and, and you, you were good proposal of a motion, but from my estimation, you know, no schools, no commercial areas, uh, the Boy Scout, I, I am willing to include it for this, because I think it's important for us to have that full discussion. Uh, the impact is clear in terms of even the flooding issues in other areas like that, um, and I recognize that. And so, I'm open to it.
I, I, I wanted to just chime in, I, I've been, I guess, moved or, 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 uh, you know, the Boy Scout area, I, I think, needs to be included in this thing. Um, I, 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 yeah.
We'll lead a motion, please, with Mr. What was-
The, the, okay, and can I, can I ask one more thing?
Absolutely.
Could, could, once the- Could, could once the, once a map gets, gets, a motion or in a second for a map be done, can somebody run a copy, run a purple line around it and, uh, post it up for us, please?
You, brother, you're exactly right.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, going back to my motion, then if I can clarify this, uh, Mr. Solis, is that all right?
Mr. McCormick, I, I apologize, Mr. Jackson asked for the floor.
One of the things that I think we need to consider with the Boy Scout camp is.
Can't hear you, Mr. Jackson.
The Boy Scouts are in bankruptcy. And what's going to happen with that, nobody knows.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCormick, back to you, sir.
Okay. Uh, here, here's my motion for, uh, Mr. Bueller's benefit and for everybody else. I think that the, the important, one of the important things to remember is that all we do is make a recommendation to the city council. It'll be up to the city council again to hold hearings and to ensure that, uh, people from the Boy Scout group are, are invited to participate and made aware of what's, what is happening. In fact, this will have no effect at all on the Boy Scout camp. It would have an effect if the Boy Scouts and the, and the owners reached some agreement whereby they sold off this property and developed it. And it would, it would, it would set up as a preemptory, uh, fact that the property had already, already been rezoned to the limitations of the RR district. So here's my proposal, Mr. Bella's diagram and the yellow outline, which excl, includes everything west of west, and west of northwest military, north of the intersection with the West Avenue. And, uh, it would exclude the PUD, of course, and I propose as, as that for discussion and for presentation to the city council, we suggest a recommendation of everything northeast of West Castle Lane should be excluded from the RR district. That provides us room for, uh, compatibility transition. It provides room for the church and it provides for the current, uh, commercial use of, uh, parts of that corner that are already in effect.
Mr. McCormick, be, before we finish, I, and I appreciate that, but I have a clarification with the city attorney. Um, what Mr. McCormick said is that we would send this recommendation to the city council. I would propose that it still needs, this, this cake is not baked yet. There's still probably another, another public hearing or two before we determine all what it should look like, before we send it to the city council. The city council recommendation has to be concise and, and, well, precise in terms of the area and everything else. I, I anticipate at least one more public hearing, or I'd like to recommend that we look at one more public hearing, or even two, but with the notification to those that we designate tonight. That's what needs to happen. You can't send the council in that form.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include Mr. Solis' comments. Let's, let's set up a second hearing, public hearing, and notify the scouts, uh, and whomever else we need to, and, and aren't they the only ones, Mr. Solis?
Yes, sir. Yeah, not, and, and everybody should be notified, absolutely.
Well, to be fair, they have been notified by, just as, just as all the persons here were notified, uh, you know, it's been posted.
That's, well, y- you're correct, and, but it's, it's, everyone is notified by public hearing, everybody is notified on the agenda being posted. However, when it personally affects your home, it would be a direct notification that this is potential for your house. I see that as a different notification versus, you know, the signs go up notification.
They, 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 they will be during this process, before any action is, is, any, where close to finality happens. We, we've had multiple, they, the cake is done.
Mark?
Um, a couple of comments. The, the proposed resolution, which obviously the, the boundaries in the proposed resolution are not what Mr. McCormick's motion is all about, but, but the wording was that, that whatever these geographical boundaries are, those are properties that are eligible to be rezoned to RR. They're not being rezoned to RR, they're just eligible for being rezoned. That was the wording of the resolution that I, that, that, you know, and I can draft a revised resolution that tracks Mr. McCormick's motion, um, when it's ready for action and, and a, and a final vote without the, um, addition of an, of a, yet another public hearing. Tonight's motion that Mr. McCormick has made, as I understood it, was the Bella diagram, um, excluding the PUD and excluding everything northeast of East Castle Lane, um, and now includes having a second public hearing and notifying, um, the Boy Scouts and, and whoever else y'all designate. Um, that motion should get a second or should die for lack of a second.
You have a motion in a second, now more discussion. Mr. McCormick, are you okay with what our city attorney has outlined for you?
Yes, I have no problem with that. I think that, uh, in the end, it's the city council that makes the decision, there will be at least one more hearing before the city council, before action is taken. And, uh, we, we're proposing an additional hearing tonight to satisfy your concerns about the Boy Scouts, although I think that, that legally they've had notice by publication, which applies to all the residents of the city. Uh, but we'll have an, another opportunity for them to be present if they want to be.
Yes, I, I, I want to be clear, I think for myself, I want to make sure that whatever is this commission provides to the city council is exactly what it needs to be for them to make a great consideration and have a greater discussion. I don't need them to have a discussion about what's in and what's out. At that point, they can add or do as they wish as a council, but at least they have a solid starting point with our recommendation. Mr. Hernan, any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to personally see that everybody west of west gets a notice mail to them, whether they're, uh, residential or commercial. Uh, so we have an opportunity to see who is interested and who wants to come in here and express their opinion before we start setting boundaries.
Okay, Ms. Mueller?
So in essence, the, uh, the motion before us is to have another, uh, public hearing.
In addition to us setting a set of boundaries that Mr. McCormick's talking about. So yes, sir. And he is proposing the Bella with the Boy Scouts.
Chairman, we also have Mr. Carter on the line that would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Carter, but, yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council or, or the commission, thank you for your service. I appreciate Mark Schnall explaining, uh, at length while ago, because I just drove in from Austin. Um, I've been somewhat of an ostrich with my head in the sand ever since my wife passed away five years ago on our city matters relative to this area of Castle Hills. Now, I'm not bragging on this, but a month before she passed away, the city gave her an outstanding membership, I mean, outstanding citizenship award whereby, in that award, she's married to Billy Wayne Carter for 48 years, whom is the longest living resident in Castle Hills. It's like I'm Richard Green number two, maybe. The Boy Scouts, even though I was one merit badge away from Eagle Scout, the Boy Scouts are nothing more than occupying that property. I have spoke to the Boy Scouts numerous times over all of our zoning matters, or zoning, onslaught of zoning issues that we have had in this neighborhood for the past 22 years. It is apparent that it seems like every two years we have some type of zoning issue to deal with. That is why this neighborhood is so congealed together that we know everyone on a first names basis. I spoke to the Scouts during the Baptist Church parking lot issue because the pastor wanted access to them. The Scouts at that time did what they always do, they remain in a neutral position. I spoke to the Scouts when Basis Charter School wanted to bring the, their sewage into that area down, down the air, down, downstream of the, of the scout park. They remain neutral. And I'll just, I'll, I'll just put this on the table right now, Mr. Chairman. That 150 acre, and I don't mean to correct Skip, that 150 acre is a prime development if the Scouts walk away. And we have two streets in our neighborhood, West Castle Lane and Fox Hall Lane, that tag into that property. I have a file of my father's, my parents moved in this house in 1946 when I was three years old. When the streets were paved in 1960, all of the residents in this area had to chip in to contribute to that paving. The city asked my parents and next door, Mrs. McCarley, if they wanted the West Castle Lane extension paved. They said no, and so they offered, and I have the letter in my file, they offered my father $1 to buy that, what is called a gravel driveway right now. And my father chose not to because he didn't want to be responsible for additional city taxes. So, when Basis, uh, started their, uh, their program here to try and get that school built on the five acres, I went to the then interim city manager and asked him, showed him the letter and asked him, can I and my neighbor buy that property since we both were mutually agreeing to buy the property? We are the adjoining 336 feet on either side of that 60-foot right of way. We were told we were not the total owners of the property. That 60-foot at the back end belongs to the Scouts and we have to get their permission. I went to see the Scouts, and the scout director took it to the board of directors, took it to their in-house attorneys, and they said, no, we want to maintain a neutral position, we don't want to do anything. Well, here's, here's the problem, and hopefully the Boy Scouts are not going to, to go, to go completely belly up with this, with this bankruptcy. If the Scouts walk away from that, that, that deed that allows them to occupy there as long as they're performing scout functions, if they walk away from that and that becomes some type of realtor's dream, our neighborhood is going to be devastated. Because those two streets, West Castle Lane and Fox Hall Lane tie into that 150 acres. That's why my neighbor and I wanted to buy that 60-foot right of way, so this city manager told me that we could not buy it for $1, we would have to pay current market conditions. So we got that, current market conditions. And then we went to see the Scouts, and the Scouts put their head under the sand. So, in, in, in closing, Mr. Chairman, this is the first Zoom meeting I've been on to in a few months, but the last one I was on, I could not hardly hold my, or bite my tongue long, long enough when you said you just did not understand why we in this neighborhood want to have small rural streets, septic tanks, ruled areas, because you fought for so many years in San Antonio for better amenities. We don't want better amenities, and we do not want multifamily, rentable property next door to our areas. And with these various zoning issues that have occurred over the last 27 years, we all come together, we grab the flagpole, and we try to protect our property from any kind of encroachment that is detrimental to the character of this neighborhood. And I, I want to, in closing, I want to thank you for giving me the time. It, it's probably out of order, but I do appreciate it. Um, and, uh, Mark, thanks for the heads up on what to do, I do appreciate it. I had to speak in front of Mark so many times, 20 something years ago, he always, he always had his head screwed on tight and tried to run a good commission meeting, and I, I appreciated that at the time. But it was a fight, it was a fight, the neighborhood against a large law firm, a large engineering firm, and one of the largest churches in San Antonio. And as Mark said, spot zoning has a lot of case law to protect us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So back to the commission discussion, we had a motion, we had a second. Is there any other discussion?
We have a motion in a second, I'll call for the vote.
Say what? Oh, I just think one thing was, I did, Mr. Hernan had also wanted to amend it that we wanted to notify everybody west.
Every property owner west of west.
So with that, Skip, is that accepted?
Notify them of what?
Of the zoning changes, brother.
Of the proposed rural district, proposed geographic boundary, I think is what they would be notified of, if I understand Mr. McCormick's motion.
I'm just, I'm just, okay. I, I, that's so ambiguous, I, I'm not even sure what we're sending notice of or when or, you know, I, I, man.
I think that's, I think that's an extra unnecessary notification.
People talking one at a time, please.
I think that's an extra unnecessary notification, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Bueller, I didn't want to lose you.
I'm, I'm of the same, um, they, they are going to get notified individually by, by letter prior to their property actually being affected by any of this. If, if, if I guess your proposal is that we send a notification, an individual notification that we're having a public hearing on X date, please come, um, you know, that, maybe that might be wise, and that may be what, what John, uh, Mr. Hernan is, is, is alluding to, is that he wants a postcard sent to, to all these people and say, hey, we're having a public hearing on, and I'm making up this date, May, May, May 7th, your property might be affected, please come.
That is correct. So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye?
Uh, wait a minute, we haven't resolved the, uh, the amendment issue because I didn't, I didn't buy into the Second Amendment.
What's, what was the Second Amendment?
Second Amendment was to have another written notice sent before this next hearing.
Repeat that, I didn't, I didn't understand it.
The, uh, the Second Amendment, which you raised, was that we want to send another written notice to everybody west of west before this, before the next hearing. And I think that's unnecessary and an unnecessary additional expense that we don't really need to put into this thing.
Have a second, so it's not being considered.
What?
There was no second to that amendment.
Okay.
So we're back to your original motion, Mr. McCormick.
Okay.
No problem.
Which I'd like one more time clarifications on the boundaries in his motion.
Can you re, restate once again?
Yes, I say it's Mr. Bella's yellow diagram.
Or, or, or better, can, I, 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 which probably should have happened during Mr. Carter's speech, but, but, but can we get just a, a, a drawing of this thing and put up?
Can we put Mr. Bella's diagram back up on the screen?
There it is.
There it is, okay. Now, my, my motion was to set the boundaries to include all of Mr. Bella's included yellow area except for the area northeast of, uh, what is that, West Castle Lane, in that corner.
Okay.
And that would be excluded, that includes, uh, some commercial and includes some residential and includes the church. And so that boundary would come down the scout camp, all the way down to West Castle, down West Castle to West Avenue and back up, and take that little corner out of the, uh, proposed RR district. Uh, I recognize that the city council can adjust that, uh, more precisely as I need to, and we can adjust after the next hearing if we need to do that.
Well, I, I, Skip, you, you outlined a great starting point for us, so let's just stop there with what you're proposing. So, that's the outline, he has restated it, it's a great starting point. So once again, I'll call for the, the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the next one.
Chairman, real quick, for the May meeting, we will, as staff, um, incorporate this.
Please.
Chairman, real quick for the May meeting, we will, as staff, incorporate this as well as Mr. Ackley's. Properties mentioned because we didn't do replats, so we will redefine and bring back for the May meeting accurately.
Okay.
And if I would, if I could make another suggestion to, uh, to the city manager. Can we label these maps in some manner such as number one, number two? The, 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 in some manner so that, because we have a lot of maps floating around. And so if we could have them, I, I don't care what notation they have on them, but, but some notation. To differentiate between them.
I believe that now what we have done today, Mr. Bueller, is that we have one map where we agreed upon tonight. And that would be what we move forward to. And so I would, I would concur that we need to be able to do that, Ryan. And get it well done so that we have one map that we're looking at, that we can all give to the community and we'll be all on the same page.
We do, but, but put a date or a time or something on the thing so that, because it, because I anticipate. Other versions maybe being banted about before this is over.
This is true, and this will be dated April sixth. Shall move on to item number five. Yes, sir.
No, I was just gonna say again, because this is the existing zoning map and we've used that as a template. Um, and the city's not going to spend the money to update that zoning map until these boundaries are established for the RR district.
Sure.
Item number five is a public hearing on amendments to sections five fifty point six one or fifty dash three nine one to remove restrictions on. Habitable accessory uses in the single A family zoning district in the RR rural residential zoning district. The public hearing is now open and I have several people signed up. Item number five. Now, Ms. Kate. Okay, not a problem. And then Ms. Kathy Tarkington.
Kathy Tarkington, I'm at one fifty-three Trillium. It's not real clear. It says restrictions on habitable, habitable, habitable accessory uses. I don't know if that includes Airbnb houses or if it includes tiny houses or casitas. It's not real clear on this, so I have no idea exactly if this is where I can complain about those type of things, but.
Feel free to speak about it anyway.
Well, I moved here in nineteen eighty-four, so I've been here quite a while. It was a very peaceful city, pretty orderly. We had a lot of strict code enforcement. People had to keep their houses up and their properties up, and that is not the case now. It was much quieter. Of course, Loop four-ten wasn't nearly as busy or as many lanes as it is now. But, uh. We did have to go get a certificate of occupancy, which apparently nowadays, nobody knows what the heck to do about that. Nobody has done that. I have a neighbor across the street that moved in right before Christmas. I am sure they have no clue that they're supposed to go doing that.
I don't think it's mandatory anymore.
Well, we had to do it.
It's on our website, so, but this is not germane to this, but, um, especially code enforcement related. But again, um, it is on our website, the application process for new residents who come to Castle Hills is on there for them to fill out and send to the city.
Well, that way our police and fire knew, you know, who was in the houses and whatnot, but it's all a mishmash now. But, um, we have things like, uh, there's Airbnb at the corner of Gladiola and Jackson Keller. And the people renting it brought their trailer down from Minnesota. So there's a big old white trailer sitting on the, in the back there, which is visible from Jackson, from Gladiola. But, um, there are some houses that have popped up recently at the end of this year, beginning of this one. Little casitas or whatever. Nowadays HGTV refers to them as tiny houses or whatnot, but Castle Hills, we could. Make sure we don't allow those people to be renting or because they're not licensed. We don't know how these places ever were built. There's nobody checking on permits. What kind of? Utility usages, are they properly hooked up? Nobody knows anything and the city's not benefiting. We're not getting sales tax from any of that. And the poor police have to patrol around here. They have no clue who's coming, who's going. I mean, it's, it's kind of chaotic. But I, I'm not sure what number five is on the agenda because it just says remove restrictions in habitable accessory uses. Well, single, I live in a single family home. Uh, you know, I'm concerned about the neighbors, uh, concerned about what could pop up around me. So I'm not sure. Maybe someone could clarify what you mean on this number five. It just says remove restrictions. Well, what kind of restrictions? So don't know.
Mr. Shaw, can you clarify that in your resolution, please?
Um, not during the public hearing, sir. The public hearing is an opportunity for the commission to hear from citizens. During the discussion, I'll be glad to try and respond to Ms. Tarkington's comment.
Thank you, sir. Forgot. Thank you.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Like to see us make sure we are. Keeping this, getting back to a safe, small, uh, community, not a rental property or not anything that's. Allowing all kinds of outsiders in our sweet little bedroom community.
Back to the good old days, huh?
Yes. And so allow for resale values to go up instead of having some transients coming and going and the city not benefiting from sales tax. I mean, this is no license or nothing. I mean, it's kind of crazy.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Good evening again. Quentin Baker, two thousand, two thirteen Hibiscus Lane. I am opposed to the removal of the restrictions on our property at two, two thirteen Hibiscus. We have a restriction imposed on us, compliments of our Board of Adjustments. Uh, there was an old house on that property. Uh, we built our new house. We had to get a variance. Because we have an accessory building that's a house. And we have the restriction imposed on us that we can't rent that house by the Board of Adjustment. Okay, so if we're having restrictions imposed on us. I don't think it's fair, quite frankly, to alleviate restrictions on other accessory uses. I don't know who else in Castle Hills may similarly have some restriction imposed on them. Through our city processes, but we most certainly do. I'm also concerned about accessory buildings that may be to the rear of a property. Close to neighbors that become used in such a fashion that it becomes a disturbance to the neighbors. It's not as though it's necessarily the house that fronts a street. So I, I am opposed to the removal of those restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Majors.
I'm opposed to removing the restrictions as well. I agree with the, the other two people and everything they said about it. I don't want to see. Buildings popping up in backyards for the purpose of renting. Uh, I don't think it's conducive to a healthy neighborhood. And. I, I'm not sure. I was told that I was going to be allowed to speak to address a code issue. Is there, is that going to happen tonight?
Um, there is an area, an item number nine, that is, has the leeway for you to be able to discuss it, but we're not going to be able to do anything on it. The public hearing, uh, will happen at a later time. It's just not on the agenda today. So technically, I would say no, but I understand you made the time to be here. We can accommodate.
Well, not only that, I, I also invited neighbors to be here, which.
You should have checked the agenda. It was posted on Friday.
I was told by two council members to show up that this would be here and I would.
The agenda is posted Friday. And that would have been your public notice about what was on the agenda or not. I apologize.
Mr., Mr. Solis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Councilman, respectfully, if I'm not mistaken, during a public hearing, anyone can speak on any matter they want to speak on all, at all. They're, they're not limited to, to the item, are they?
It's supposed to be germane, yes. You, you have a topic that we're going after. That's public hearing is specifically styled according to the item that's on the agenda. That's why we have public hearings specifically.
Why wasn't removed?
Why was what removed?
Why, why wasn't?
I'm sorry, we're not going to get into a discussion. This is a public hearing on what we're talking about, the removal of restrictions. And we can discuss it later if you'd like. I can give you my work number.
Later, but who do I discuss it with?
You can discuss it with me as chair.
Okay.
If you feel comfortable.
But I think, I think under nine, this ginger, number nine will allow you to, to provide that to the commission, uh, for a future meeting.
Okay.
So let's move on. Anybody else under item five, any, anybody at home?
Chairman, I have two citizens that have submitted.
We have two readings to be made.
Yes, I have an email from Ms. Candace Hunter. Says, I'm very concerned about item five on tonight's agenda. We currently have zero enforcement of upkeep. Verification of liability coverage on this type of structure within the city. This will greatly impact neighbors' property values and ability to sell their properties if they're able. I've been blessed to live next to a casita that was built as an office. The structure is now part of a hoarding situation that is infested with a host of vermin. And she's attached some pictures and she's asked that, that, uh. The board, the commission does not vote yes on this item. And then I have another one for Ms. Andrea Hawes. Because I'm writing this, I'm writing regarding the upcoming zoning commission meeting tonight regarding item five on the agenda. I am firmly, firmly against removing the zoning designation of single-family residential districts. I am against renting out additional properties. I feel that we should keep the wording for the reference section above the same sections five fifty dash sixty-one A and fifty dash three ninety-one A. Which provides that all properties in these A double A and RR districts may be used only at, for single-family residential purposes. However, habitable uses shall not be rented. But may be occupied by occasional non-paying guests and by full-time employees living on the premises. Who function as domestic help or caregivers. Allowing more rentals increases traffic within neighborhoods, potentially increasing the traffic of criminals and predators and decrease safety. Increases property values. And she was told that Castle Hill is, is the last great neighborhood inside four-ten. Increasing rentals will strip Castle Hills of that title. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on item five? Seeing none, then at eight twenty-nine, we'll close the public hearing and go straight to item number six. This discussion of possible actions and amendments to section fifty dash sixty-one and fifty dash three nine one to remove the restrictions. On habitable accessory uses in the A single-family zoning district and in the RR rural residential zoning district. At this time, we'll have our, our discussion amongst the commissioners. Let's start off with, Mr. Herndon, your thoughts.
I'm trying to.
Mr. Chairman.
Came from, and I think it probably spun off of Airbnb.
Yes, I have an item that will, that, uh, concerns the consideration of this item. The proposed resolution and the item that's been brought forward is not, is not properly phrased and it's, it's, it's essentially very confusing. What's proposed to be deleted. From the cited sections is the section that, that provides exceptions to the single-family residence rule. The, both these sections, that's to say, fifty sixty-one A and fifty ninety-one A, or fifty-three ninety-one A. Have the same language. They say that the property in this district is to be used only, and they italicize that in the original of the code. For single-family residence purposes. And then it goes on to say that habitable accessory uses shall not be rented but may be occupied. Those are exceptions to the single-family rule, which allow occupancy of these habitable accessories by a limited category of persons.
So Skip, let me get clarification from the city attorney. So he's saying what's styled here is item number six. Is, is incorrect, and so therefore your interpretation, Mr. Schall.
Well, I think Mr. McCormick and I are going to disagree a little bit on this issue. I think the wording of the agenda item. Um, was to remove restrictions on habitable accessory uses. It is not to remove restrictions on the single-family residence use, just to remove the restrictions on the habitable accessory uses. The sentence in question that is being suggested for removal is a sentence that says that what you can do. In a habitable, habitable accessory building on a piece of property. In the A district and in the RR district. So I, I don't think it's out of order for the, for the zoning commission to consider it. For the reasons Mr. McCormick stated, I think it, it's ripe for discussion and possible action.
Well, I, as you're, you're right, Mr. Schnell, I disagree with you. Those are not limitations. They are exceptions to the single-family use. And if you take them out, what you're left with is only the single-family use, which means you can't use the habitable accessory buildings for anything. You can't rent them. You can't have them occupied by someone aside from the family. If you want to, if you want to proceed with that, that's fine, but my motion is. That we table the item until it can be reconfigured in a, in a, in, in an intelligible fashion. And reach a conclusion that is, is, uh, more, more satisfactory than what's offered here in the proposed resolution, which is not adequate for much of anything.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Yeah, I, second to motion to table for clarification.
Uh, the motion takes precedence over everything else, so we have a motion to table discussion. Commissioner Jackson, any thoughts?
No discussion, Mr. Chairman. Vote on the motion to table.
I was thinking. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. This item is tabled. Next item, item number seven. Public hearing on amendment to section fifty dash five one nine of the zoning ordinance. To add a provision limiting the number of short-term rental permits on one street. Public hearing is now open. It is seven thirty, eight thirty-three. And on item seven, I have Ms. London. Oh, she left already. I apologize. She marked her out. Um, Ms. Tarkington, once again, please come back. Item number seven. This is on short-term rental permits. You mentioned it in your conversation about. So let's expand that while you're here.
Short-term rental.
They are B and Bs, as you mentioned.
Airbnb's or the casitas that could be behind someone's house. A lot of these are not permitted or there's no sales tax, no benefit for our city. But the. Point of that, we want to keep a neighborhood. If you start putting in a whole bunch of these, then. You ruin the quality of life.
Let me refresh you. This is adding a provision limiting the number of short-term rental permits on one street.
Well, I do want to limit the number of these for sure.
Kind of what I thought you were thinking. Okay, so you're in favor of this?
I am.
Okay.
We've got.
Do you have a number in time, in place and thought process as far as how many?
Well. Maybe per housing area, just limited to two or three in an entire area.
This is targeted to one street only, so we're, we're talking one street. That's what you're, you're seeing in front of you.
For street, well.
I just want your thoughts since you're here already.
Maybe just one.
Okay, thank you.
Simple. That way children with bicycles and people that are trying to be out walking their dogs won't be run over by. People who are more eager to get out to see tourist things.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Baker. Ms. Majors, you're on the list. Well, you're not, but I'll include you.
Quentin Baker, two thirteen Hibiscus. I am all in favor of imposing limitations on short-term rentals. Uh, we do have a situation here in, uh, on South Winston. Of a short-term rental that exhibits all the properties we should hope to avoid. It basically is a weekend party house. To the disruption of everyone in the neighborhood. So, you know, getting some protections in place, by all means, I encourage it. You know, when we say limitations per street, problem is some streets are shorter and others are longer. You may want to do it per hundred yards or some other designation. If I are back on my street and on Twinleaf where we had our original house. It's kind of a long street, you know, one on that street. I, I prefer it be zero. My personal preference because of the. My personal preference because of the disruption. You know, that's the minimization. So I would encourage us to get some limitations in place to protect all our, the neighbors who have to live next to the Airbnb houses.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Majors, come on back. Again, this is the discussion of public hearing on an ordinance to add a provision limiting the number of short-term rental permits on one street.
Got it. I, well, he just brought it up. The streets, the size of the street matters as to how many rentals. That's really all I was going to say. I think that needs to be considered.
Thank you. Anybody else on the internet or watching us, streaming with us, have a comment in reference to this issue? Seeing no comment, then I will close the public hearing at eight thirty seven PM. And we go on to number, item number eight, which is discussion and possible action on an amendment to section fifty dash five one nine of the zoning ordinance to provide, to add a provision limiting the number of short-term rental permits on one street. Mark, did your resolution make, I don't, I don't think I have a copy of that resolution.
I thought it was in the packet, Mr. Chairman, is resolution two thousand twenty one dash oh four dash oh six dash C. And the resolution is patterned after the rule in the comprehensive short-term zoning ordinance adopted by the City of San Antonio, which is that there should be no more than one eighth of the total number of single-family or duplex units on a single street receive a, a short-term rental permit. And that tracks the language in the ordinance adopted by the City of San Antonio a few years ago. And, and does take into account the, the comments that both Mr. Baker and Ms. Majors made, and to some extent, Ms. Tarkington, about limiting particularly in, in Mr. Baker's case and Ms. Major's case, taking into account the difference in the length of streets.
So once again, what we'll be voting on tonight is the actual number that in the B, in A single-family district and in B duplex district is limited to no more than one eighth of the total number of single-family and duplex units on one single street. That'll be the determination of the permits. Discussion, Mr. Herndon, why don't you start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you. I think one, in my opinion, one out of eight is way too many. I was looking at, I just counted the houses on the street and I think I counted thirty two. That would put four on the street. So am I able to make an amendment to this?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make an amendment as changing it from one in eight to say one in thirteen. I think that stretches it a little bit further and I'm sure we'll hear more discussion on that in a few moments.
You have an amendment to the motion. Well, actually, why didn't you make the motion with that amendment?
We don't have a motion yet.
Right.
Yeah, we will.
Have a question. What does five nineteen say now?
Mr. Mark?
Mr. Jackson, five nineteen is silent on this so that right now you could have six short-term rental houses in a row on any street in the city. But in order to have a short-term rental under the city ordinance, you have to have a permit. You have to go through a process that's very well-defined. There's an application. And there is a provision that you have to have a pay hotel motel tax and things of that nature. So I don't think we have a, a whole lot registered yet. I think it's still in the process. The staff is still working on the details on that. But right now there are no limits. So whether it's one in thirteen or one in eight or one in something in between, the idea is to add something to our ordinance that would address this issue before it becomes a problem.
Question I have then is if we have one in eight or one in thirteen and you have people come in and apply for this, does that knock out the remainder?
Yes, sir.
So it's first come, first served?
That is correct.
So I have to beat Mr. Herndon to the, to the, to the permitting office.
Hold on one second. I, I need to make sure that we're clean. I need the motion and I need a second. So the motion by Mr. Herndon was amendment to change this ordinance, I mean, this resolution to one thirteenth per street.
One per thirteen.
One third, Mr. Chairman, is it one thirteenth, which would mean every thirteen, one out of every thirteen houses? And if that's the change, then the change would simply be in the, in the resolution part, the, the last substantive paragraph marked H, instead of it saying one eighth, it would say one thirteenth.
That is correct. But I need, I need a second before we move on.
Is that Mr. Herndon's motion?
Yes, sir. Any seconds?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Now, please speak.
So I was just kidding. I was, because John earned in the two block, two houses down. So I was joking that we would have to race to the, race to the permitting office. So anyway. Yeah, it, so that, that I guess would be if, if, if there's limitations such as this within other cities ordinances, you know, I, I think that, that, you know, this is a good thing that we have limitations in place. And that, that solves some of the problems with the, the longer street versus shorter street issues.
Yes, sir. It also shows a little bit of vision and anticipation of what could happen in, in the future. Mrs. Schnau, you wanted to speak again, Mark?
No, nothing, nothing else needs to be said.
We have heard from Mr. McCormick on this issue.
My only problem with one thirteenth is it's such an odd fraction.
It's right up your alley then, right?
I guess. No, I agree, there has to be some limitations. And I do have some concerns about overdoing it. And I'm a little bit concerned about having Airbnbs in the RR district because of the additional traffic that, that the short-term rentals will, will inevitably produce. I think they, I think that's a, that is a potential problem that, that is down, down the way. I don't know whether it can be resolved by reducing the number of short-term rentals in the RR district or whether it should be, should be addressed some other way. But for the present, I have no, no concrete objection.
All right, appreciate that. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. It'll go to the city council.
Chairman?
Chairman, if I may ask, who made the second, please?
Oh, Mr. Beeler.
Chairman, real quick, just for Mr. Jackson's knowledge, I know Mr. Schnall expanded, but there is an application process. They pull a permit. And there's also health and safety inspections by our building and code officer of the operator who pulls the application as well. So they got to have all of that complete before they can operate a short-term rental in Castle Hills now.
And it does lead up to the question that was Mr. Jackson, first come, first served? So if somebody blocks out the street, they do it, then anybody else that has an inkling may be blocked out.
And just for the commission, this will come to the May council meeting.
Not a problem. All right, so then we go on to item number nine. Discussion and possible action on a zoning-related matters related requested by city councils, city staff and city residents placed on the agenda for zoning commission meetings in March, June, September or December, provided that a written request is received by the city manager by the fifteenth day of the preceding month. I believe Ms. Majors wants to speak in reference to this.
Okay, I'm just going to say what I thought I was going to have time to say as an agenda. I'm asking that the code addressing parking upon permeable pavers for the purpose of creating more parking space on a residential property, property be more specific.
You can remove it.
In my neighborhood, there is a home that laid down permeable pavers next to the sidewalk, leaving, leading directly to the front porch. The owner placed the pavers in the middle of the front yard and it is very unsightly and degrades our property values, in my opinion. I don't think this is what the code intended. I think probably the code intended for the permeable pavers to be laid down where one would expect a driveway to be along, you know, to extend the driveway or along the side of the house. If this code is allowed to stand as is, is it conceivable that people could put pavers down all over in any which way in their front yard? Is this what we want our neighborhoods to look like? There are other parts of San Antonio which allow this, but I don't believe this is what our residents want. Please consider removing the permeable pavers for the purpose of parking from the code. I think it just needs to be cleaned up.
Thank you. So gentlemen, this is what we're going to discuss. We're done. Thank you. There's no other comment. This was something that we gave you an opportunity to speak in terms of.
Can I make a request that this be on next month's agenda?
It'll be on in June.
But I still want to talk to you.
And my number is two one zero.
I don't have a pen, but.
Two one zero eight six zero nine five nine six. Yes, ma'am. My phone is available at any time. So gentlemen, this is what I wanted to be able to discuss. We have a system that is created when somebody presents an application for a zoning change. That's what triggers us to be involved. It's a clear process. You have a change, you see something, you want to be able to change for the SUP, whatever, they come and that's the process. What we don't have is a process for, as an example, the item that just came before us. How do we decide what comes before us, utilize the city staff time, send out other things to be able to make that consideration? What I am talking about is we have to sit and discuss and create a process for non-applications that come and request to the zoning commission. You, you have in the past gotten messages from city council people, hey, you should consider this, consider that. I still have always maintained that there is a time, and you'll hear this again, there's a time for big government, there's a time for a little government, but there's also a time for no government. And to me, when we start following people's perception of what should be in the neighborhoods or not, then we go down a rabbit hole that reminds me of a book that I used to read when I was younger. And we end up in a different world of where it is up to one neighbor to decide what another neighbor should have. And that, my friends, is not what I grew up or understood in terms of checks and balances. We have the checks and balances because we have zoning codes. We have the checks and balances because we have a code compliance officer. We have the checks and balances because we have other codes and, and things that we have to follow, including how we just adopted for the rural residential district. So in my estimation, what I want to be able to propose, that we, we, we consider an item where we can say, here's an expectation of threshold. I will tell you what was really strong with the rural residential district was that petition that had sixty-six people named. That told me that you guys did your homework, that you talked to your neighbors. And it wasn't just you bringing three neighbors along with you and saying, hey, we, the neighborhood opposed this. That, to me, is unacceptable. We have to have a public mandate. This time of understanding how things are done in the past need to go away. We need to be able to be responsive, which we will be. And we will hold public hearings for people as we have done so well with transparency, as we did for you guys in the rural residential district. You guys have shown us how it works. You guys have shown us what an opportunity. But if it wasn't for that petition, I would have said, well, there's only six of you here, what the heck? You guys showed us that it was a community wanting change. And you have seen by this action on this commission that we've not only passed it, but now we created boundaries and we're moving forward to be able to get to where eventually we all need to be. That's important. So commissioners, what I, what I'm proposing with this, with this resolution, not this discussion and possible action was just that I want to create that every, every third month of a quarter, we put a standing item on the agenda for residents to come forth with their ideas and concepts and for us to at that point see what was real or not. And, and by my definition is like, bring me a petition, show me there's thirty, forty people that, that feel like you, that there's something that needs to be changed. Because think about the request that we recently just got. I want a change of ordinance that's going to affect all the city of Castle Hills based on one house. On one incident. That's unacceptable. That's not a public mandate. So let's move forward on it. It's a discussion. What are y'all's thoughts?
I'm certainly, this Beeler, I'm certainly not opposed to the idea of having, you know, citizens, how, how presently does something get on our agenda? I, I'm just, I guess ignorance. But how, how does something get on our agenda? Does someone approach the city manager or one of the commission, one of our commissioners or have to go through the commissioner as the gatekeeper? How, how does that happen?
I would say either through application process, a council request or a commissioner request. At least that's what I'm been dealt with in the past, being here as city manager. Mark can probably elaborate, he's been here longer. Sorry, Mark, don't mean it in a negative way, just historical, so.
Historical perspective, Mark?
We, we won't get into who's the oldest person on this call. Mr. Rappley's explanation is correct. During the period I was chair, almost everything that came before the, in fact, even the, the, the whole twenty-five years I served on this commission in one way or another, virtually everything that came before us was either based on an application from someone who wanted a zoning change or a special use permit or was part of a review of the overall ordinance. I, I really can't remember anything that specifically came based upon a suggestion from a member of the council or from another member of the zoning commission. Mr. Solis's proposal would at least create a mechanism for that as well as a schedule for it.
It could end up being a free-for-all.
You know, and, and, and I, I respect that. And, and the fact is that, that there will be neighbors that would like to, to exploit that. And I would respect that because it's, it's, I, I have a duty to be here to listen and to be transparent about my expectations. If you bring me an item that says it needs to be considered, I probably will shoot back. Is under what mandate or what are you thinking? And who else is along with you?
Well, I can't see any reason that we can't try it.
Correct.
I don't know that it should be a permanent
Okay.
situation.
I, and, and I, I propose we, we start in June, which is the third month of this quarter, and have an item that just says, if you have something of concern, that you think that we should be addressing it. And, and it's not going to have a full public hearing. It's not going to have where we're going to, I mean, it's going to have a, excuse me, let me be back. It will have a full public hearing, but the expectation is that the zoning commission will then say, we will then stamp it and move it forward to the next level, which is the manager consideration as well as whoever else has to rule on it. So otherwise, ten dollars that needed. Yes, sir.
Couldn't this just be solved by general citizens to be heard line item on every agenda? Or is that going to be way too broad?
That's a good question. Mark, what are your thoughts?
I think that's an excellent idea. Historically, the zoning commission does, has not had a citizens to per, citizens to be heard item on its agenda in Castle Hills. There are other cities, including some that I represent, that do have a citizens to be heard item on each zoning commission agenda. And that would give the, the zoning commission opportunity to hear from citizens what their concerns and issues are. And during that process, a member of the commission can ask that the item be placed on an agenda for a future meeting. And that, that might also alleviate the concern Mr. Jackson raised.
Not bad, I'll accept that amendment.
I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Would, I would, well, okay.
Beeler? Skip, did you want to speak?
Our, our.
Go ahead, Mr. Beeler.
I, I, I had just some crazy idea that time limits that we don't get into these three-hour speeches during a citizens to be heard.
Okay, let's, let's go with five minutes.
But I don't, but I don't know, but I don't know that we can do that either.
You can. You can. The typical amount of time is three minutes.
Minutes.
But I've seen them anywhere from two to five minutes.
Let's go to three minutes. Is everybody seems to be content as here?
I, I couldn't possibly get out much, but as anyone who's been in a courtroom with me knows that, that I can't get much across in three minutes, so.
I believe that's the norm for city council also for three minutes.
It is.
Mr. Bueller?
Some time limit.
Your motion would be to do, to present, which I think is a great idea, a public hearing, excuse me, Mark?
Add a citizens-to-be-heard for each zoning commission meeting with a time limit of whatever Mr. Bueller wants to put in his motion.
Three minutes to be consistent with council.
Certainly.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
We have a recommendation, I like that, gentlemen.
Real quick, Mr. Schnall, does that have to be something that's in chapter fifty?
No.
Okay, never mind.
So it is eight fifty-seven PM, I thank everybody for being here, I'm making a motion to adjourn. We got a motion, a motion is second by Bueller, Jackson motion, Bueller second, all those in favor say aye?